At seven o'clock? We're not late. At seven o'clock, we're calling the November 19th regular zoning commission meeting to order. I believe we have a full complement of members, so we don't need to appoint any alternates. First order of business is the minutes of October 15th. Do they want to have any corrections for the regular minutes of October 15th?
Yes, I have a couple of small things, Dave.
Okay.
Well, I thought it was better organized, but the one thing that occurs like three times is Mr. Hafner, there was testimony from a resident whose name was Bob Hafner, Robert Hafner, and his last name is spelled incorrectly.
Oh, okay.
It occurs at least three times. His last name is spelled S.F.H.A.F.N.E.R., and in the minutes it appears N.A.R. as the last three letters of his name.
S.N.E.R.?
Yes, it's N.E.R.
Okay. So that's on line 154?
It's in there three times, but I'm...
Anything else, Bruce?
Here we go. It's line 116, 154, 117, 58.
Fifty-eight, yep.
There's also a typo on line 264 that has to do with the date of tonight's meeting. It's in those minutes on line 264, it's November 18th. Obviously, it's November 19th.
November... Okay. They have a motion to adapt the minutes as corrected?
So moved.
Second.
Second.
Second by Kevin. All in favor?
Aye.
Close. Carrie, six, nothing. Okay. We're under the first order of business, which is public hearings. We have one, two, three, four, five. The first one is open the public hearing on application 1847. Mr. Secretary, can you read the call?
Application 1846 of John Galvin, applicant for text amendment of Article 7, Section I of the Simsbury zoning regulations regarding vehicle repair, facilities, I got a stamp in the wrong place, facilities in the I-1 zone.
Thank you. Is there someone here to speak to that application? Do you have anything from staff?
Well, this application was reviewed by the planning commission, and they received a favorable, they granted a favorable recommendation, finding it was consistent with the plan of conservation and development goals and objectives for the 2017 update. You should have, there's a one-page staff report from me. The only comment staff has, obviously, it's a legislative action. This would apply to all the I-1 zones in the town of Simsbury, this change. We'd remind you that any motion, if you're to approve this, you need to set an effective date, suggested that December 15th be your effective date if you are going to approve this.
Okay. This is, we're still in the public hearing. Does anyone want to comment on this application? Anyone in the public? You're all in the public, you can speak. Anybody in staff, in the commission, I mean? Any questions from commissioners, of staff or otherwise? I guess we could entertain a motion to close the public hearing.
Mr. Chairman, I move that we close the public hearing for application 1846.
Second?
Second by Donna. All in favor?
Aye.
Close. Okay. Carrie, six, nothing. That application is closed. The next one is application 1851. Mr. Secretary?
Yeah, application 1851 of Michael Glidden, CFMCZEO, Director of Planning and Community Development, applicant on behalf of the Simsbury Zoning Commission for a text amendment to Article 7, Section B dot 7, and Article 7, Section C dot 9 of the Simsbury zoning regulations regarding accessory dwelling units.
Okay. Mike, do you want to explain what?
So, the commission may recall, this is a result of our workshops that we met back into August for updating and changing your current regs as it relates to accessory dwelling units. Right now, under the regs, all accessory dwelling units are subject to a special exception. They are required to have independent entrances, and that they cannot exceed 1,000 square feet. So the maximum square footage has been reduced to 600. They are required now to have a working door between the two units. The units can no longer have separate utilities, they're supposed to share utilities with the primary residence. And then, if you wanted to put an accessory dwelling in a detached unit, however, that would still be subject to accessory, I mean, a special exception. Attached to the house would be subject to a site plan approval. So that's really the big change, other than the design standards now are really, we've eliminated a lot of the subjective categories that are in your current regs, and now it's a more of a demonstration of compliance as it relates to design, performance, et cetera, versus some that were like, left it open for the commission and/or others to determine what exactly is positive versus negative as the impact of a potential accessory dwelling unit. These are, the commission may recall, it was our second meeting in August, the same language that the commission approved. Staffs available for any questions?
Questions of staff, any of the commissioners?
I have one, Dave. I was just curious, Mike, if you could remind us, the current regulation as it's written allows for a door from each, the ADU and the primary into a common hallway. It says maybe to a common hallway. Was it our intention, I don't remember the discussion, to eliminate that possibility? It can't be doors into a common hallway, it has to be doors in a common wall.
So, so the comment was, the change of the regs was, under your current regs, you require an independent exterior entrance and exit to the accessory dwelling unit. Now, it could be a mudroom, for example, or some sort of feature that accesses both areas. Now you're requiring direct access to both the primary structure or the primary residence and accessory dwelling unit. Your regs are silent to that connection between the two units, so an operable door has to be there so that, you know, if you're in the house, you can walk into the apartment. And really, the intent was, with that reg, it's something as, when we did our research, looking at other communities and how they regulate accessory dwelling units, this is something that was a common theme in some communities that kind of limited the abilities of this becoming independent rental unit. Really, it would function as, you have a member of the family who's living in this unit, because you're not going to just rent out to anyone the unit if it's interrelated connected. It still offers a housing opportunity to people in the town, to, you know, you can age in place, the fact that you can still have an accessory dwelling approved on these regulations. So Bruce, does that answer your question?
I get it. Thank you, Mike.
It's not exactly, it's the text, you know, because if you had a hallway, you know, you had an entryway, you could have two doors that are not on a common wall.
Yeah.
You know, and you don't want to, you can deny that just because they're before.
Yeah, I'm sorry. I'm so sorry. So basically, it limits the appearance from the road of an independence of the two units, really. I'm sorry.
Yeah, but is there a different way we could have, you know, between the units? Or is the common wall, it has to be a common wall?
As for an attached unit, yes, if it's addition to the house, et cetera.
That means that the other one can't have a door that's off the hallway that makes it a separate unit. So they'd have to say that hallway is part of that unit, I would say.
I think any kind of connection between the two units, interior connection is what we're looking for, so.
An interior connection.
Interior, yeah. So, I mean, if it's in a hallway, I don't think we can get that detail.
Instead of, like, instead of common wall?
Or an interior common wall.
Or you could just say the operable door, operable door, just eliminate a common wall from subsection E.
Sure.
Okay. We're not deliberating yet, we're having...
If the commission had issues with that...
That's what we're good to talk about.
Yep.
The only other comment to you is also remember that in this new reg, parking areas, off-street parking areas, you must provide at least one off-street parking space on a proper solid surface dedicated to accessory dwelling unit, and also that full visual screening to be provided of that area for the unit. That's something that was another issue that was brought up, a common theme that the commission heard based on historical applications.
Are there requirements, like, so how do you designate a parking space? Are there requirements for the home in general that then, so if I had a home and I have an accessory dwelling unit, there's parking space in my driveway?
So you're required under the code to provide two off-street parking spaces for a single-family residence.
Okay.
So then, when you would apply to the zoning commission for, you know, your accessory dwelling unit, you'd have to show, well, I got my two for my house, and over here is my one, whether it's in a garage, whether it's a screened area that's a paved or durable surface.
So it's going to be in addition to the two?
Yes.
Any other questions from the commission? Do we have comments from the public to comment on this application or this text amendment?
Chairman, I move that we close the public hearing for application 1851.
Second by Mike? Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Close. Carrie's six, nothing. Application is closed. Okay, application 1852.
Application 1852 of Robin Newton, Code Compliance Officer, applicant on behalf of the Simsbury Zoning Commission for a text amendment to Article 10, Section H dot 6 of the Simsbury zoning regulations regarding temporary liquor permits.
Okay, Robin, can you?
So, this, as you know, came about as part of a workshop that we did with you guys also in August. Our current regulations require that any groups coming in for one-day events that are involving alcohol, they have to go through our special exception process, which is a public hearing process, in order to get approvals. We discussed changing the language to it to make it a little bit easier for them to go through that process. We see a lot of the same not-for-profits every single year that come in for the same events. So the new language as proposed would change it from a special exception to a site plan approval for up to 15 times per calendar year for any organization. Once that organization has come in for that site plan approval with you guys, any approvals after that would come into my office to be reviewed by the Code Compliance Officer as a zoning permit. If they want to exceed the 15 times per year, you guys did put a caveat in there that they would have to apply for a special exception back to that public hearing process to do that.
Thank you. Questions of the commission? We did discuss these at some length. Okay, public audience, would anybody care to speak from the audience? Yes. Mr. Jansen?
Would you be sitting down?
No.
You want help, can I be off right? Over the years, if you look at the files, I've probably done more permit applications than anyone because of PAC and Bridger Flowers and Chamber, and before PAC got the regular license. And anything to make it a little more user-friendly would be great, because not only do you have to deal with Simsbury, you have to do a liquor authority, and sometimes a timing coming here, Board of Selectmen, and then getting all that information, all the sign-offs, you have to submit six different signatures to the liquor authority. So anything on this end, they have done to make it, you know, like Bridger Flowers is every year, and certain things happen every year, so I'm definitely in support of anything you can do and still have the control you need. But it's been a cumbersome process over the years, it takes a lot of time, it has.
So you agree with the change?
Do you agree?
You agree with it?
I'm in favor.
Okay. Jerry?
Jerry Lindner? I support what Ferg says. I'm in favor.
Marshall FC, 43 Sweet Talk Street, also representing Rosedale. I heard the word nonprofit, is this any organization, so?
No, the way that this specifically is worded, it was for, oh, we did change it. We originally started with not nonprofit. It is for any organization.
That's right. So I would go through the same format, because I do the same thing every year. I listen to you, usually 12 to 13. So I would just go to you, you get that one, the same thing, I would go at the beginning of the year and just give you the 12, 13 dates, and I would get approved at that time.
So once you would, your first approval would go through the zoning commission as a site plan approval, and then anything after that would come to me?
So I still would go, for me, that would be the same format then.
One time. Well, no, it wouldn't have a special exception.
No special exception, no public hearing.
Oh, no, I'd just go to you then.
Just the one time, and then you get the site plan approval.
And then after that?
Then after that, you'd go forever.
Forever, yeah.
Well, forever. One change to the site plan, and then, so long as it's under 15, which was a number specifically for an individual that might be sitting in the room or not.
I can't give you a half a bottle of wine or anything now.
No.
I'll take one though.
So you can hit it on the phone. Yes. So I guess go to you in the beginning, and that's okay.
Would that continue in multiple years, because it?
It would continue in multiple years. So, so there's other language in here that, provided there's no complaints about the event from the previous year, or no other circumstances that are presented to the zoning officer, you would continue just to get a zoning permit from our office. If something comes up between those years, so say there was an issue at one of the events, then it would be up to the zoning officer to make a judgment call as to whether or not they want to send you back to the zoning commission.
Better make that two off.
Any other comments from the public?
Mr. Chairman, I move that we close the public hearing for application 1852.
Jackie, sorry, Jackie. All in favor?
Aye.
Carrie, six, nothing. It's closed. Okay, application 1856?
Application 1856 of Christopher J. Smith, Esquire agent, Thomas R. Evans owner, for special exception pursuant to Article 8, Section A, footnote 8 of the Simsbury zoning regulations to increase coverage to 58.7% as provided by Article 8, height and area requirements, subjects subsection A, scope of requirements, footnote 8 on the property located at 132 Hot Meadow Street, Assessor's Map F-18, Lot 154, Lot 006, Zone B-1.
This is a continuation of the public hearing that we had the last time. Any questions of the commission? Anybody in the public would like to speak to the...
Mr. Chairman, for the record, I'm sorry, I was just waiting to be recognized.
Yes.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the commission, Ms. Newton and Mr. Glidden. For the record, my name is Chris Smith. I'm a layman's attorney and partner at Shipman and Goodwin, and appear before you this evening on behalf of the owner-applicant, Mr. Tom Evans, who's with me this evening, of 132 Hot Meadow, that is the subject of this special exception application. Just for a very brief overview, we did have four different applications. There was a text amendment concerning different street parking requirements with driveways, and you did modify and approve that at the October 15th public hearing. There was a special exception for an alcoholic, a retail alcohol beverage sale use under your regulations for the subject property that you entertained a public hearing on October 15th, and that was closed, but you did not act on it that evening. And we did address those relevant use issues, I believe, during that public hearing process. There was this third application for the special exception to increase the impervious surface, or to permit the impervious surface to go up to 58.7% on the subject property. And I think it's fair to say that the commission was about to close the hearing on that, but determined to leave it open so that there could be further comment from your town engineer, Mr. Shea. We did provide a revised set of plans addressing, well, we added, provided additional information to Mr. Shea, your town engineer, who did provide you with a subsequent report dated November 1st, that I believe is part of your record, where we indicated that he did receive our information, and you were satisfied that, I'm paraphrasing in my words, that he was, he signed off on it, basically saying that he was satisfied that we had addressed his concerns that were before the commission at the October 15th meeting, which I think is one of the main reasons you left the hearing open. There is a site plan, related site plan application that comes up later on the agenda, but going back to this application, the special exception relative to being able to go to 58.7% for impervious coverage, I do have with us this evening, Mr. Merrick Kemet, who is our civil engineer from Anchor, and who did provide the supplemental information to Mr. Shea that had formed the basis for Mr. Shea's follow-up report to you indicating that he was satisfied. And with permission of the chair, Merrick can just walk you through those revisions as to the stormwater only, very quickly, so that you have that explained to you, and that obviously formed the basis for Mr. Shea's follow-up report, signing off on everything.
Okay.
If it's with your pleasure.
Fine.
Okay, thank you. Merrick?
Hello, everyone. Merrick Kemet of Anchor Engineering, from St. Mary's Manor. The revisions that were made from Mr. Shea's memo were all related to runoff numbers, curb numbers, you know, directional flows and how it was going to be handled, and we did address those, and I don't really want to get into the numbers, because I don't know if that's really relevant, but the essence is that, you know, we did address his concerns regarding the flows. And we are providing a zero net increase, and in my professional opinion, we're not going to be doing any adverse effect on adjacent properties. What I also want to mention is that we also added some details, revised the details on those plans, and we also included a change to the landscaping, which was pertinent to that text amendment that we had, so those were part of the revisions that were before you. In addition to the drainage, which Chris didn't mention, is, we're here related to the impervious area. And what I wanted to show is that, in order to abide by the zoning regulations, the parking configuration was designed as such. That was to accommodate the maneuverability of the passenger cars, as well as maneuverability of the garbage trucks and the delivery trucks for the site. The zoning regulations, and I briefly touched upon this last time, was that we are required to have 19 parking spaces on this, on this property related to this use. We have provided those parking spaces, the 19 of them, which includes a handicap spacing. In order to do so, and to meet the zoning regulations, the, reminder, this is the configuration. This is how we, in terms of where we got. So with the coverage, the maximum covered allowed is 40% according to the regulations, and we are asking to go to 58.7. The previous structures on site was a house in front, that's 950 square feet plus or minus. A dilapidated barn in the rear that was taken down is also one on the easterly property line, it's about 700 square feet. We are replacing that with a new structure at approximately 2,850 square feet, with the improved drive and parking area yields the percentage that we're showing you today at 58.7%. I think I've hit that part of it for the impervious. Is there anything else, or any questions that the commission would have?
The barn that you referenced that's on the eastern edge of that property, is that still existing, or is that a drawing of something that used to be there years ago?
That one did, yeah.
And the large one that's in the middle of the parking lot, the new parking lot?
Yeah.
It's not quite in the middle, but that was...
Is that one in the rear as well? Yeah, they're all, they're all down already.
Both of those are gone. There's no barns there at all.
No, just the remains of them, I guess.
Right, your staff, any comment? No.
So, we received a follow-up from the town engineer. Attorney Smith is correct. The town engineer is in agreement with the redesign and basically supplemental information that Anchor has provided. You should have a staff report from me dated November 6, 2018. We have four potential conditions of approval, should the commission approve this special exception. One is that the special exception is for an increase of 18.7% to the maximum impervious coverage. Any changes to the maximum impervious coverage to the site which results in increase beyond 58.7 will require approval from the zoning commission. Two, that a Mylar of Sheet 204 of approved plan set entitled Site Development Plan of 132 Hot Meadow Street, prepared by, for Thomas Evans, 271 West Pond Meadow Road, Westbrook Connecticut, prepared by Anchor Engineering, revision date October 18, 2018, has been filed to Land Records with the Simsbury Town Clerk. Three, pursuant to Operation Management Plan, applicant is to provide yearly inspections to Planning Department, that stormwater management structures slash features are operating as intended. And four, that special exceptions for lot coverage, curb cut layout driveway to Hot Meadow Street requires approval from Connecticut, DOT District 4. That's it for me.
Thank you.
I just want to add that regarding the drainage and the calculations, those will be presented before you in the later part of tonight's agenda, which is more critical for the site plan.
No, this is the public hearing and the coverage, so...
Right, they're separate.
So we'll keep that separate?
Yes, please.
And deal with it at that point? At the site plan.
Well, this is, I think this is the area where we're talking about the runoff.
Which documents?
Okay. All right, so basically with the storm drainage, it was designed to retain and treat the stormwater prior to leaving the site. We had submitted a drainage report to the town dated August 27th, and the final revision to that was October 17th, which has the updated calculations that was asked for by town staff and engineer.
Yeah.
So, the concerns we have is trying to hold back the water so we can create a zero net increase in runoff. Basically, it's broken down into three sub-areas. We took the drive and the parking area. That is all going to be collected into catch basins here and here, which is going to treat the water for the oils and sediments. Then it'll be stored underground in storage chambers, the storm tech storage chambers, to hold back the water before it outlets off-site. It's going to be treated to the rear of the property, which outlets to a level spreader, which is going to absorb the water, lead the site at a different flow than at the peak flows. The other portion of the property is the building, which is going to be collecting all the roof water. This is all going to be clean water. All of it will be piped and discharged to the front lawn basin. From the lawn basin, it's going to go to an outlet structure, which will then tie into the existing state system. And currently, existing conditions, there is an existing pipe that already has that water there, although it is a little bit different now, because we're going to be adding it, and that's adding more water there, and that's why we have an increase in the area of the lawn basin. The, I guess the westerly side of the property is going to remain the flow in this direction, which it currently does. And what happens is that at this point, there is an existing inlet, which goes directly into the state system as it does now. What we are doing is we are decreasing that flow slightly, but in the event this water is still being discharged to that location there. Now, current conditions, the rear of the property is actually discharging to the east... discharging to the easterly side, which is going towards the property owned by the barber shop. What we're doing with this is we are actually picking up the water from the parking area, discharging it to the rear, which decreases the amount of water actually going towards the barber shop. The water that is actually going this location will be picked up by a swale, as you had a plan, and being discharged to the rear of the property, which in essence is going to reduce the amount of water going off-site in that direction. This neighbor here, we'll definitely see a decrease in the water flowing in that, which should improve his site. The drainage was designed for a 25-year storm. A 25-year storm is typically what we, we design for, for drainage systems. However, the drainage report does study for a two-year, a 10-year, a 25-year, and a 100-year storm events, all which were reviewed by the town engineer and addresses all its concerns. Just to give you an idea of the flows we're talking about, we're not talking about really high flows, but in a 25-year storm, the total existing flow that we have right now is about 2.4 CFS. That's not a lot of water at all. What we're proposing is actually a decrease to 1.9. So we're decreasing about a half CFS by utilization of the lawn basins, the subsurface system, which will be below the parking lot, as well as the level spreader. As indicated in the drainage report, no substantial increase to the storm water is proposed from this development. And, and in my professional opinion, I do not see any adverse effects on, on the adjacent properties as proposed, as I previously stated. If there's other, that's just a overview of it, but if you have specific details, I'm more than willing to throw out the numbers, but you want to hear some numbers, but-
Okay. Members of the commission have questions?
I would offer the reminder, at our last meeting, there was a question from one of the residents of the condo complex to the rear about water. I understand your perspective, but he was questioning whether there was likely to be water running off that back property line down into that wetlands. And your explanation was that wasn't going to happen. But let me just ask this. What is the elevation difference in that green margin area versus the current elevation in that area?
What we're proposing versus what's there now?
Proposed versus the existing, yeah.
We're raising the back end, looks like about two feet, two, three.
Two to three feet.
Yeah, we're raising this, yeah. So this is going to be sloped off, but all this water is going to be caught and directed to the level spreader.
Via a swale of sorts across the back.
The, the existing from the curb to the property line is going to be overland flow like it currently does.
Okay. Overland flow to the southeast, towards that corner of the property?
You're going to have, you're going to have overland flow on this in all directions. The parking area is going to be picked up and retained underground, and then discharged to the plunge pool level spreader.
Okay, yeah, okay. Got it. Thank you.
Yeah, you're welcome.
Other questions?
Just to clarify, so basically the, any water is being contained to the site?
We're holding back the water, yeah. We're, yeah, we're providing a zero net increase in runoff from the property.
Zero net increase is not the same as knowing, no water off the site. It's no increased water off the site.
Correct. That is correct. Yeah. You still have to discharge water, you know, you can't stop the water from, from going to where it naturally would be going. But we have to, we don't want to increase that flow from the development. So that's why the subsurface drainage system and the basins and everything is all created to reduce that amount of peak flow leaving the site.
Okay. Questions of the people in the audience? This is a public hearing. Anybody like to speak to this?
Carol Rappaport. I live at 126 Hot Meadow Street, 700 acres. I'm just wondering what's going to happen in the wintertime with the snow, when it gets all pushed off of the parking spaces, and then in the spring it melts. Here is that water going to melt, and the driveway being treated with salt or sand, what's going to happen to that? Right now we're talking about a property that is grassy, and when it snows, the snow stays right where it is, and it, you know, melts right into the ground. But what's going to happen with a driveway with 19 parking spaces in the wintertime with the snow and the, what's going to happen in the spring?
Okay, this, this isn't a debate.
Well, I'm just, you know, I'm just, I'm concerned about, I'm sorry, I'm concerned about, you know, what's going to happen.
Right. Yes, sir.
I have a general question relative to impervious versus impervious. Harold Bender from West Mountain Road, I'm sorry, Marine Drive. I've seen impervious pavements that allow water to flow right through them into the ground, and you don't have to deal with runoffs and drainage and so on. I've seen this in a federal state park type lot up north in New Hampshire, Vermont, and it's simply blacktop paving with larger aggregate with less, I'm not sure of the term, the adhesive, the blacktop, the tar. And it's basically like a sponge, it just flows right through it. And it becomes an impervious surface, and you reduce all the impervious issues.
Okay. I hear your comment. Anyone else care to speak to this application? Would you like to comment on anything that's been said?
Just, just very quickly, one of the things that we were told that we had to address by your, by staff and Mr. Glidden in particular, when we came in for preliminary discussions with this property, was that we had to address the storm water, just because they're, in particular with the property to the east with the barber shop. So that, so this was specifically designed to not only ensure that nothing was going to, wasn't going to be any increase with the runoff going to the rear of the property, but also that everything would be collected in the paved area. It would be directed, first of all, from the barber areas. There's not, nothing is going to be going that way. It's going to be directed to the rear of the property, but it will be collected, and it's going to be infiltrated so that there will be, by the time it's discharged through the spreader across the property in the back, the up gradient of the adjacent property, that there would be a zero net increase, and that it would be treated by the time it got to that point in time. And that was something that the, your engineer wanted us to, to make sure that we review. The system's been designed for a 100-year storm event, and as to the impervious surface, as you well know, this is a very small lot, as are many of the lots along Hot Meadow Street. This is just around half an acre. And to have the requisite parking of 19 spaces for the use, which is a permitted use in the zone, in the V1 zone, we do, it necessitates that we do go over up to 58.7% with the impervious. As you may recall, there was a question from Mr. Shea, your town engineer, concerning the amount of the impervious, but he, we did supply him with the additional information that he requested, and he was satisfied with that relative to ensuring that we weren't going to have any adverse impacts to the adjacent property. So in conclusion, I just, just wanted to point that out. It's a 100-year storm event. Everything is being collected before it, and you have the infiltration, infiltrators here, before it finds its way to the detention system, which is very, very small because it is just a small area. You're probably accustomed to shopping centers with rather, rather large detention systems and stormwater treatment systems. While you have all that here, it's just on a much smaller scale to ensure that there is no increase, and that everything is being properly treated. And I would just respectfully request the commission consider acting favorably upon this special exception, which is required for us to be able to go forward because we do need it to accommodate the parking. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you for your time.
Any other questions from the commission? I did hear your engineer say that it was a 25-year design.
Well, it was evaluated for all the storms up to 100 years. So it is designed to accommodate 100 years. But technically, you know, the systems aren't designed for 25 years, but this is kind of accommodating 100 years. It is designed for 100 years.
Just wanted to make sure that you knew it wasn't just the standard 25 years required by your regs, that it's designed for 100 years, which has, I'm not even going to go there with all the events we've had across the country, but, but it is designed for the 100-year storm.
What about fires?
Sorry.
Stop.
Mike, is this consistent with the engineers?
Yes.
Understanding?
Yes.
Okay. Any other comments, Mike or Bruce?
Just, just one, I mean, I, I was going to let it go, but you used the term treated. The water is treated somehow between where it lands and where it ends up. It's treated. What does treated mean? Is that just a euphemism, or is there some explanation that we should hear from an engineer about what treated means?
Well, basically, the, the catch basins are taking the water and treating it there. What I mean by treated is holding back the, the silts coming off of the parking, as well as the salts, any oils, anything like that, before it actually gets into the subsurface drainage system. So it holds everything back in those basins.
Okay. And that's achieved by having the outlet above the bottom of the basin, right?
Yeah, so with, with the addition of a bell cover or something that protects it from the oils and everything like this, yes. Thank you.
Does that require maintenance at some point in the future?
The, the actually, the operation and management plan requires a yearly inspection, so they're going to go out, look at the basins, make sure they're functioning. If, if for some reason they need to be cleaned, they'll clean them as a yearly basis. And that's why, as, as our actually stormwater permit with the state of Connecticut, we are required to monitor these systems and make sure that people are maintaining them, so you're not having a situation where the system's no longer functioning and you're flooding out your neighbors. So.
Great.
Any more questions or comments?
Well, to comment in the audience, I have the same. I mean, it's a tiny, tiny lot. Where's the snow going? And is there a concern with that?
Well, simply put, we, we have a 15-foot separating distance from the edge of the parking and the property lines.
So that green space is-
Not the entire thing, but you're going to create the snow shelf. You're going to dump the, the snow probably right on the edge of the parking area. That's, that's where it would be like you would have any other project in town. The other option would be to keep it in the parking area. The problem with that is now you're, you're taking away from the parking space. So that, that is a challenge, yeah.
And I just couldn't see the scale. I didn't realize that that was almost 15 feet from the border in certain areas. Yes.
But once you leave the parking lot, it's going to drain off-site.
It will be draining off-site.
Right.
Correct.
Which is the concern.
Wouldn't it drain through the normal process, through the normal?
From the, from the, the parking area out, it's draining off-site.
But it's draining, they're routing it to the front and to the back.
Not on the sides, no.
Not once it's on the grass.
Once it's on the grass, no?
Yeah.
It goes to the drain copies.
It doesn't get in, it doesn't get treated, it doesn't get contained.
Which is true.
Yeah.
Yeah. There's a two-foot elevation drop from a minimum of actually, yeah.
All the way around.
Minimum two feet, maximum four feet, all the way around the property.
Right.
Right.
And this, just for the record, Chris, but this is, I mean, that's pretty standard for every development proposal that you have. And I know that we have these massive storm events recently, and you just don't have the parking because it generally goes into the parking area as opposed to going onto somebody else's property. But this really isn't any different than any other, probably the town hall parking lot, too.
And it's impervious surface. Some of the water's going to go in naturally into the ground.
The whole idea again is that whatever's being treated is going to presumably be picked up within the parking area confines. It's not going to be carried off in the snow. The treatment would go down before the snow does come. And generally, that's how it would work. I'm just, just pointing that out as a, as a practical component when, when these things happen. But, but you're correct, it's just that most of the treatment occurs, then you have the storm with the snow, and then what's taken off isn't, isn't something that's been treated necessarily. In fact, unusual, I mean, you wouldn't be able to treat three feet of snow once the snow is on the ground.
Right, right.
But I just wanted to point that everything that's within the paved area that is treated would be picked up and would go through the system. Just trying to address that question. Thank you. Okay, thank you.
Any questions? Jackie, Donna, Bruce?
Good.
Have a motion to close the public hearing?
Do I have a moment to say something?
Just a sec, excuse me, do you have a minute?
Can I say something in the public hearing part still?
Yes.
Okay. Aside from the drainage issue-
Name and address, please.
Oh, my name is Deborah Bishop, 126 Hot Meadow Street, 6A. I live in the condominium behind this, this proposed property. My concern beyond the drainage issue is that the size of this lot is not really, we talked about it at the last public hearing, it's not really big enough for a large truck to come in and actually turn around in there. And so what has happened with the Dunkin' Donuts site is that trucks come into our complex, turn around in there so that they have a better angle to go up on, to the north on Hot Meadow Street, and then back into the property. And because this lot is not sufficiently big for these big trucks to get in there, or for them to go around the building completely, my concern is that that's going to happen once again, and we're going to have more trucks coming in trying to turn around into the condominium complex so they can come out, go north on Hot Meadow, back into the, with this property. So I would say they're trying to put too much in too small of a space. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else like to speak?
I just wanted to point out, if you just take a quick peek with regards to the snow issue that was brought up, if you look at Mr. Glidden's report of November 6th in the second page, I think you can see just the entrance to the condominium that's rather long, that just, I presume, and that's why that it all ends up on probably all that green space directly in between my client's property and their driveway, since there's no place else to put it.
Right, right.
But I just wanted to, I mean, and you can just look at all the impervious surface in the immediate neighborhood, so to speak, by looking at the aerials that Mr. Glidden has in there. Thank you. That was it. Sorry, Mr. Chairman.
Are we ready to close?
Sure. I move that we close the public hearing for application 1856.
Second. Second by Donna. Call in favor.
Hi.
Close. Ed Carey, supporting the application. Close. One more public hearing. We have application 1858 of Mark Greenberg. Mr. Chairman, or Mr.?
Application 1858 of Mark Greenberg, agent, expecting Fiore, owner for a zone change from R40 to B3 on the property located on the northerly side of Pauline Truck, on the border of Simsbury and Canton, shown as Sessors Map 820 block 503, lot number 02-A, Zone R40.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening. Phil's Oil from LADA Land Planners here in Simsbury. Rich Correa is with me. Rich is a real estate agent, and we are representing Betty and Mark. We've made an application for the rezoning of a piece of property that is about 18 and a half acres. It's right on the border of Canton and Route 44. On the north side of Route 44, you should have received a packet that would have included this plan, the site survey. The owners have owned this property for quite some time. Betty has inherited the land from her family. And the land is divided. There's a town line breaks the property up. There's clearly seven acres on the Canton side. There's 18 acres, plus or minus, on the Simsbury side. The Canton side is entirely zone business. This is a larger air photo showing colored in a light yellow, the existing business zones. Route 44 runs east-west generally through the area. The red line is the Simsbury, Canton town line, Canton-Simsbury. Avon is, is here. So this map really shows three towns, but Route 44 kind of breaks through that area. So this map really shows three towns, but Route 44 kind of breaks through that area. The land along it is virtually entirely zoned commercial. And this piece of property that Fiora's own breaks down into it like a knife blade. And it's zoned R40. The back of Betty's property extends up about 2,000 feet from Route 44 in the town of Canton, that's all zoned business. And the most likely access from this piece of property, the practical access to this piece of property is actually through Canton. That's where the topography is the best. So we have sought a zone change to take the piece in its entirety, the 18 acres, and rezone it B3. B3 is actually a similar zone to the B zone in the town of Canton, and B3 exists on the Hoffman property at the bottom of the hill. This piece of property is, when you're driving down Route 44, it's the trees you can see at the top of the hill. Back part of the property is our houses that are coming up from West Mountain Road or lots that come up from West Mountain Road, and those lots are zoned R40. About 70% of the perimeter of this particular piece is zoned commercial, and we think it would be appropriate to be zoned commercial. We have gone to the Planning and Zoning Commission, and we, Planning and Zoning Commission, that sounds stupid, the Planning Commission, and we received a, because I know you guys are the zoning commission, we received a unanimous vote of support. Their charge, as you know, in a zone change is to determine whether or not you are consistent with the plan of conservation and development. And to determine that we were. And so we're here before you to take that last step. I think we may have a letter, I know we have a letter from the WPCA, I think we have a letter from the Fire Marshal, though I can't recall seeing that, that would indicate that this, they don't see issues, the sites. The site would be serviced by Simsbury Sewer as it exists in Simsbury. And there's a right-of-way that connects down to West Mountain through that was negotiated years ago with the Hoffmans that would allow sewer to come down to West Mountain, would also allow fire access. That might be developed as a fire access, but nothing more than a fire access. The portions of the property that are in Canton that aren't your charge, but for your information, there's a sewer that comes up to Lot Tratoria, so all the Canton development would go towards Canton. The Simsbury development would go towards Simsbury. We've had a meeting with both the town planner from Canton and the town planner from Simsbury to talk about the issues where you have a property that is bisected by a town line, access, fire protection, that type of thing, and all those issues look like they are resolvable. And that's the story.
Okay. Questions of the commissioners?
We don't have any maps provided to us that I've seen that show the topography lines, the topography lines.
I'm not sure, I don't think the face survey does. No, I don't think that there have been any maps that show the topography.
There haven't been submitted to us, but I suspect they exist somewhere, but...
Oh, yes.
Not in our material. Okay. The reason I ask is that this map, which is in the material that was given to us tonight, in the middle left-hand, along that margin, there's a notation about the possibility of easement, an access easement. And I'm trying to position that in my mind's eye where that actually is on Route 44. Is that approximately where the sign notifying of this meeting is standing?
I think that's approximately.
Or is it up on the ridge somewhere?
But I'm not sure exactly what that, Rich, I don't know if you know what that access easement is. No. The, if, if, we have looked, we have shared this with... The way the property is disposed, the topography is easier coming up from Canton. So most likely, our access would be through Canton. We might have a couple of building pads. The B3 zone, as you know, limits impervious surface to 40%. It's a relatively rigorous design district. So there's sort of, there's limits to what you can do on the property. And we have walked the property with Betty, Betty Fiora, and the Route 44 section of the property appears very steep, and it automatically, you know, turns you off. You look at that and you say, gee, that's very steep.
I'm trying to position, where is that on the drawing? Where is this?
We'd be coming in somewhere down by Lot Tratoria.
The steep stuff that's up by Route 44, where is that on the map?
The section of the property in Simsbury is only about 100 or 150 feet long, and that's actually near the welcome to Canton sign.
Okay.
I think the welcome to Canton sign might actually be in the town of Simsbury. I think the Chamber of Commerce put it up, so they'd be the ones to talk to about that. But it's somewhere in that area, and that area is too steep for access. You'd really wanna take access where it's a lot, a lot, a lot less dynamic.
So at 150 feet, is that what you said the frontage is?
I think in the town of Simsbury, it's only about that, yes.
And that makes this a non-conforming lot, right?
No, it's a pre-existing lot.
But it's a pre-existing, non-conforming lot.
In terms of frontage, yes. If I were subdividing it today, it would be, I could not, I could not do it. But because it is otherwise attached to land in Canton, the town line, there's no real lot line that runs through here. The town line just divides pieces of property between one town and another. We actually have 400 feet or 500 feet of frontage along Route 44. It just happens to be divided by a town line, but it is in no way a non-conforming lot.
That's an interesting description. So as we look at the B3 zone, which has a 200-foot requirement, that's, there's no conflict there because of land that lies in the town of Canton. And as you describe how...
Correct.
...the measurement is taken. That's interesting. Thank you.
Billy, call in some staff members.
So the update is correct, this went to the Planning Commission, which they received a favorable recommendation. Water Push Control Authority, the superintendent has reviewed this. This is what the sewer service area, so development can be supported by public sewers, just a matter of where they, they have a few options to connect the sewer. You know, one is they can go down to West Mountain Road adjacent to... The other is going out to 44, there's sewer service out on 44. The last one is connecting into sewer service that is within the Hoffman Auto property. So you at least have a development that, one way or another, can be supported by public sewer, sewer service in Simsbury. The Fire Marshal sent an email basically saying he had no objections. They're gonna, one of the main things, as Mr. Doyle presented, is that when a development plan comes to the commission, he's gonna be looking at secondary emergency access. Most likely, that right-of-way will probably be of multi-purpose, right-of-way serving as your fire access road and potentially your location for sewer connection. Other than that, staff, there's no comments.
Questions in the commission?
Go ahead, Bruce. I wonder if you could give us a little fuller picture of the vision that has been, maybe it's just brainstorming at this point, but what is the vision for the development of that property if we were to go ahead and change the zoning to I-1?
Rich, I don't know if you can answer that better than I, but it will be some type, we think, it will be some type of retail, commercial, mixed use, but I don't mean housing by that, but various types of commercial development, whether that's restaurants or offices or retail. But a mixed use in that is, we have not been able to take that too far because the zoning has not permitted us to do that. The R40 zoning doesn't allow us even really to explore that, so no one is really willing to talk to us about it. But it will most likely be a cluster of buildings, some type of commercial buildings built on the interior of the property. And because the zoning requirements limit the impervious surface to 40%, the, that development is gonna be clustered probably relatively tightly. And we expect a significant amount of green space to buffer all of that. And its signage is likely to be on the, on Route 44 on the Canton side. We hope to achieve a traffic signal on, at that point, and there are a number of places that we can choose that point of access, but there will be two or three pad sites on the Canton side with a traffic signal coming up to service this. And because the site is, to some degree, visually isolated from coming from the west, we're hoping to find tenants that have some prominence, some name, so that it will be a destination location. It really can't be a mom and pop location, it's gotta be a, you have to have very strong tenants for that. So that's as far as we've taken the thinking at this point. I know Rich has reached out to people, but you can't take it any further unless we have a commercial zone. It's a waste of time, nobody wants to talk to us.
Okay.
Well, I guess there's a little bit of discomfort in that description for us in that we have a responsibility, if we change this, in our consideration of changing that zone, to ensure that the development that goes in there is consistent or harmonizes, is the word in the P O C D.
Correct.
With existing uses. And when we don't know what you're proposing, I'm not sure how we judge whether it harmonizes, in particular with the residential order.
It's very difficult, because it's very difficult for us to do that at this point when we don't have the zoning. It's a great stretch to do that and could be very misleading. We could be showing you things that might not, might not be accurate. So that's the best I can tell you, that's what we're shooting for. And in looking at the B3 zone, and is it Article 10?
Correct.
That controls the B3 zone and the process?
Correct.
Because when you take a look at Article 10, and, Mike, you probably have the pages right in front of you, but you have, when we bring an application in, this is, it's not a freebie. We have to come in and we have to demonstrate six or eight or 10 principles that control us and make sure that we fit into the neighborhood and harmonize with the neighborhood. You guys put that zone together to protect the town, and I think it does a wonderful job, and we're willing to go forward with that, knowing that we have to meet those principles. You might wanna read them.
Yeah, I would follow up with Phil's comment that, you know, you're treating it similar to a special exception of approvals within the B3 zoning district. We don't get a lot of applications because obviously, like Simsbury Commons is built out. If the zone change were to be approved, and let's say that they come in with some large retailer, they're subject to, they, standards that basically, they're looking at impacts to neighborhoods such as the height of buildings, circulation, landscaping, safeguards to protect adjacent properties. So in the case of a map that's behind Phil right now, you see some green lines that kinda, those, I'm assuming, Phil, like are distances from the property line?
If I put in distances in here, we're over, that's over, that's just 400 feet to here. We're 400 feet, the closest something might be is 140 or 150 feet.
So in this case, that topography, location, et cetera, will drive where they can locate some development on this property. And then your, your Article 10 comes into play should, should down the road, this zone change be approved and a development application is applied for, you're gonna start looking at a higher degree of review and protection for the adjacent properties. It's similar, I would compare it to the standards contained in the regs dealing with special exceptions. All development in the B3 zone is held to a higher standard, so...
That's exactly the way I read it.
So.
In the CROG report, they talked about, in the CROG report, they talked about protecting a certain area that they consider a priority conservation area. Where on the property is that?
I'm not sure.
Yeah, neither am I. They did not provide a map to clarify that comment.
I had to view it online.
There's a, on the town P O C D maps, there's a section in here that shows slopes over 15%. That's the only thing that I could relate to, so, and we're not proposing, we wouldn't at this point think about coming into this area, but that's all subject to change. So I'm not sure. That's the only thing I could read into it.
Yeah, they just recommended protecting it during the time of the development application, so it's not now, but...
You know, this other interesting, this is an interesting piece of property. There are pieces in the P O C D that talk about interconnecting trails, wanting to have a trail run along the ridge. We're already starting to think about that, making sure that we can accomplish all of those goals. So we believe that we're completely consistent with all of the principles that are built into the plan of conservation and development.
Rich Correa from broker, also, it's not gonna be a big blocks by any stretch of imagination, doesn't fit on the site properly, and the regulation doesn't allow for that either. So if you're looking at, you know, junior, smaller-sized buildings, even if it's office, it's not a, it's not a size and a half, and it's something much smaller.
Okay, is there anyone in the public who would like to speak to this application?
Yeah, Harold Under from 6 Marine Drive. I can probably point out the easement access at this point, but the concern for myself and the Southwest Homeowners Group is, commercial driveway onto West Mountain is like a no-no. I know that's not been discussed. The fire access, Hoffman has a fire access right now. They have not maintained it. Fire department would essentially have to plow through that fence. They used to have a metal gate there, they would have to plow through, and I'm not sure how much damage that would do to their vehicle. The concern, the slope itself, nobody's talking, I mean, the topography was mentioned, but nobody's gotten any display of what the topography is. It's pretty steep on parts of it. And if you look at the backside of Hoffman, their storage area, to walk from there up to the top of the ridge, that's a steep climb. So basically, what it means is a good part of that is steep, which is gonna mean a lot of soil is gonna have to be removed or moved in to make that, you know, developable in a sense of platform to put any buildings onto it. Also, on the Canton side, all of that is an aquifer protection area, and part of that sticks into Simsbury, not a lot, but there are houses down below that are on wells. There is no city water down there. So concern would obviously be runoff and making sure that's captured someplace and controlled. I don't know where there are sewers on West Mountain Road. We're on the bottom end of West Mountain Road, and we're all on septic tanks. There's one runoff of stormwater from Hoffman, a retention basin that they've said never fills up, but that goes through a 20-inch line into... But that goes through a 20-inch line into Simsbury Commons and then further south. And I'm not sure where that goes. But that retention basin essentially holding some of the water. And years ago, we went through similar issues with Hoffman that the conservation area and the retention basin was used as a dump. So, yeah, in that case, they were poor stewards. But the idea is that the retention basin, holding enough water. And like I said, I'm not aware of any sewers, you know, for sewage treatment and so on in that area. So the concern is steep land, the water runoff, and the no commercial access onto West Mountain. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else like to speak to the application? Anyone else have comments? Commission?
Maybe I'm asking you to repeat something. But I'm curious about the access way, the easement that Mrs. Fiora owns across the Hoffman property. And is that suitable for withwise and for other requirements? For a road to provide access? Oh, sure it is. When she acquired that, it was a 50-foot wide access easement for access and unlimited for accessing utilities. And one of the... We agree with the comment from the gentleman in the public that there should not be commercial access coming from this property down to West Mountain If the fire department would like to have a secondary access for fire purposes, that's fine with us. But our intention is not to go out to West Mountain Road. Because the property is zoned R-40, if we proceeded in some fashion with the residential development under the R-40 zoning, we would be using that access for access to the suburban single acre, whatever it is, zoning development. We would not be coming through Canton. We'd use the Hoffman. And the piece that we have found very troubling about that, one of the pieces, is that that accessway winds around just immediately behind the Hoffman auto park. So we could put 14 or 15 houses up on that piece of property. But every day, those people would be coming and driving past the Hoffman auto park, and it would be relatively unattractive for those homeowners. They'd be looking down on the Hoffman auto park. And I'm sure the town staff would be getting comments all the time about something or other. There'd be all kinds of complaints. So we just don't think that's appropriate. And in the... It just seemed to us to be a more comprehensive, a better approach, to say, why try to develop this property for a small number of homes that would have to drive through an auto park for, basically for access, when we could commercially rezone it, take all the access out to Route 44, and if we do a good job, achieve something better for Betty and her family, and also generate tax revenue for the town? So that's the key to the argument. In regard to some of the comments that the neighbor had mentioned, we have to have a number of discussions with the WPCA to identify exactly what sewers we'd be connecting to. This is all a long-term process. You know, if you are able to grant a rezoning, we are not going to be back tomorrow with site plans. There's a huge amount of work that has to be done to define things like where do we want to take the sewage connections? How do we want to make the stormwater connections? All of that has to be built in. So this is a long-term, large project. And it's not going to be done overnight. There's going to be all kinds of communications with the town staff. But it has to be approached a lot.
More questions? Want to keep it open or close it?
I'm okay to close it. I'm good.
Bruce?
Yeah, I think I've heard enough.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman. Yeah, Mr. Chairman. I move that we close the public hearing for application 1858 of Mark Greenberg.
Second?
Second by Donna. All in favor?
Aye.
Closed. It's closed, 6-0. Okay. Now we're into full business. Application 1846 of John Galvin for a text amendment to Article 7, Section 1 regarding vehicle repair facilities in the I-1 zone. This is to add the ability to do automobile repair on the site where they can do everything Anybody have any comments or questions about it?
Yeah, I'm not sure why we would do it.
Why what?
Why would we do it? That's my question.
Why would we do it?
Yeah.
Because the guy wants to have his business there, and he's asked us to. It's a garage that has permission to do almost everything but vehicle repair, historically.
Yeah, but we already have a zone for garages, for automobile repair. I mean, this isn't a zone change. This is a text amendment. He's looking for something.
Text amendment.
Right.
Sorry, they went...
I guess my thought, Dave, is just that when somebody asks us for a text amendment, there's got to be some explanation for it. We can't just say okay to everybody who comes in with a text amendment.
Right. But this, I believe this particular thing went to...
This has been ongoing.
This has been ongoing. Mike, can you give him a little bit?
Yeah. So they applied for a use fairness with the Zoning Board of Appeals. If the commission recalls, you did a referral on this, was it about?
July.
Four months ago?
Yeah.
So, which, he withdrew his application, and that's why he filed the text amendment.
So is he a new owner?
No.
No.
He just says it...
A new use, same building.
Yeah. We went through this. It was... We agreed with the zoning... The Zoning Board of Appeals asked us, what did we think about it? And we said, well, they really should have a text amendment. So I think that's... He's doing what we asked.
What we recommended.
What we recommended. So that's why we're doing it. Or that's why he's asked for it.
Oh. Hmm. So it's possible he assumed that Mike would represent his interests at this meeting.
No.
He received agenda notice for tonight and should have been here in attendance.
Anyway, what do you think?
I think we could make a motion.
How about Donna? Kevin?
Yeah.
Mike? Bruce? Are we prepared to make a motion in this?
I'm prepared to hear one.
Okay. Okay.
Mr. Chairman. Just in case. So if you are going to make a motion to approve this, you would have to approve the application and also set an effective date. December 15th for your... All of your text amendments this evening, along with your zone change, will get you out of the appeal period for...
Do you have a recommendation on this?
It was a one-page, you should have an all, really. It's a legislative action by the commission. So this is one, it's up to the commission if you want to entertain this change. Just all I'd ask is that you, if you're going to vote in favor of this, that set effective date for December 15th.
Set effective date. Okay. Jackie? I'm not making a motion.
Sure. I'm going to make a motion for application 18-46 of John Galvin, applicant for a text amendment to Article 7, Section I of Simsbury zoning regulations regarding vehicle repair facilities in the I-1 zone. I'm going to make a motion for...
Motion.
To approve the text amendment.
And an effective date.
Yep. And it would be effective December 15th, 2018.
I'll second it. Second by Mike?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Passed at 6-0. Okay. Application 1849, Christopher Smith. This is the liquor permit on a property at 132 Hot Meadow Street. Discussion?
Any motion first?
Any motion?
Mr. Chairman.
Yes.
For this, you may want to hear amend the agenda in here. Application 1856 first, that was the special exception for the lot coverage. Because if the commission is not going to add that special exception, then the other two applications at this point, you couldn't proceed with.
It would be smaller.
Well, they'd have to redesign, yes. And then we'd have to talk about an extension from the applicant for the site plan amendment.
Can I have a motion to...
Amend the agenda to...
Amend the agenda.
To application 18... In this order, 1856, 1849, and then 1850.
I'll second it.
Second by Mike. All in favor?
Aye.
Both? Okay, it carries. Okay, application 1856 for a special exception to increase the coverage to 58.7 percent. Ready to make a motion on this? Is there a recommended recommendation, Mike?
In your report, I pulled it up on my computer. The, as I said, the... It just had four conditions of approval. One is the special exception increases for 18.7 percent. Not any changes to the maximum purview coverage of the site, which result in an increase beyond 58.7 will require approval from the zoning commission. Two is a mylar of Sheet 2 of 4 of the approved plan set titled Site Development Plan of 132 Hot Meadow Street, Simsbury, Connecticut, prepared for Tom Evans, 271 West Pond Meadow, Westbrook, Connecticut. Be prepared by anchor engineering. Revision date, October 18th, 2018. Is to be filed on the land records of Simsbury. Tom Clark agreed pursuant to the operation management plan for the applicant. The applicant is to provide yearly inspection reports to the planning department that stormwater management structures and features are operating as intended. Four is special exceptions for lot coverage, curb cut layout. The driveway to Hot Meadow Street requires approval from Connecticut DOT District 4.
We don't have that. But, Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion that we approve application 1856, incorporating the conditions just read by the town planner.
Second then.
Further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Carry 6-0. Okay. Application 1849. This is for liquor permit for a package store. We have a motion. Is there a proposed motion?
No, I did not give you language for this one. It's just simple.
Straightforward.
Approve or deny the special exception.
Mr. Chairman, I move that we approve application 1849 of Christopher Smith for a special exception pursuant to Article 10, Section 8 of the Simsbury zoning regulations for a liquor permit for a package store on the property located at 132 Hot Meadow Street.
Second by Jackie. Further discussion?
Just one thing, well, two things. First, I'm not sure if this needs a motion to close the public hearing. Because this was tabled at the end of the last meeting, wasn't it?
We actually closed this at the last meeting.
Okay.
It's the only one we closed.
Okay. And this application relates only to the issue of the permit, the liquor permit, as I understand, right?
Right.
Yes.
For a package store.
Right. I think that personally, I'm not supporting this element of the plan for the development of that property. I think the applicant hasn't met the burden to suggest some compelling argument for that purpose in that location. There's a liquor store one mile south of there on the same road. It happens to be across the town line in Avon. And two-plus miles north, across from the bagel shop, is another liquor store. I think there's enough liquor stores in that area. Again, I didn't hear a compelling argument for this location. So I'm not supportive of a liquor permit for that location. I'm supportive of development, but not that use. So that's what I have to say about this application.
Donna?
I'm okay with it.
Kevin? I made a motion. Mike?
I think that the town will speak for its desired use in that if they want a store there, it will be supported. And if not, it won't be there long. And we will find out in time. I think it's the property owner's rights.
Jackie?
It's one that meets the criteria.
Well, one of the criteria is the proposal use in the proposed location. That's a criteria. That's in the zoning regulations.
Fair enough. More discussion? Jackie?
I'm in favor of the permit.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
Opposed?
Or no. I'm not in favor, Dave.
You're in five to one.
I'm having a hard time over there.
With Bruce opposed.
Thank you.
Please note that. Okay. Application 1850 for a site plan amendment for a package store.
And for the record, Chris Smith, on behalf of the owner applicant, Tom Evans, this is for the site plan and administrative review and having to meet the requirements. As part of this, we have the text amendment that you did approve at the last meeting on October 15th that enables us to request a reduction of the side yard setback from what would otherwise have to be 20 feet. Because this is a business-owned property adjacent to a residential zone. And typically, it could be 15 feet. But for the fact that it is abutting the residential zone property, which is basically the access driveway, as we know, to the condominium development located to the westerly side. So because of that, we're here asking, you approved the text amendment that said that we can go to 15 feet over here, which is what's shown on the plans, which would otherwise be, again, the requirement under your regulations if this was not a residential zone strip. And one of the things that you indicated during that public hearing on October 15th and when you voted to approve that text amendment was that you would have to demonstrate additional landscaping. And this is referenced in Mr. Gliddon's report to you of November 6th and 2018. And we did submit a supplemental landscape plan to Mr. Gliddon, to your professional staff for their review. And Mr. Gliddon does incorporate some of those supplemental plantings in his report to you of November 6th. And starting at the bottom of Page 2, it continues on to Page 3 with depictions of the various trees and whatnot. And if you'd like, Mr. Chairman and members of the commission, Merrick can walk you through those additional landscape enhancements that we provided in support of our request that we be able to have a 15-foot space or buffer between the access driveway and the parking on the westerly side of the property. So if you want to hear that, I mean, it's there. It's included in Mr. Gliddon's report. But again, Merrick...
Well, I'll just piggyback on that real quick.
Okay.
The plans that were revised in front of you, we had incorporated additional landscaping via the approved text amendment. With that, we submitted to the town, and town staff actually wanted additional plantings above and beyond what we submitted based on that one. So that's what is in front of you. We had some gaps between the landscaping plans, and town staff had indicated they would like additional plantings. We went back and forth, and this is what we came up with. Before you, on the bottom section is actually the nomenclature for all the abbreviations up above and what type of vegetation will be there.
And in Mike's report, Mr. Gliddon's report to you, he has provided you with depictions of what those trees will look like. In addition to them being shown on the plan, if you were to approve it, obviously, it's incorporated in the plan and would be part of the approval. And again, this is the site plan component of the proposal.
Right.
The additional landscaping fills in some of the voids that the proposal on Sheet 2 of 4, they had... There were spaces and openings that had potential for, you could see into... You didn't have really a lot of landscaping. you could see into, you didn't, you didn't have really a lot of landscaping proposed. So this really beefs up, and they did. I have to commend Mr. Evans, because I met with him last week, and they got this to us immediately. And it satisfies our requi, our concerns for the potential visual impact on the abutting property. So we're fully in support of the change.
Okay, design review, review this.
Yes, the design review actually reviewed this at their last meeting, gave a favorable recommendation. And then this evening, they reviewed the material list for the building itself and provided a second favorable recommendation to you.
And I can't quite tell the distance between this row of plantings and the driveway. I mean, just for the snuff, that's what we're talking about.
We have superimposed, Merrick has it superimposed on the aerial as well.
I have, I have updated aerial to show in the vegetation regarding, you know, related to the surrounding areas. Just to give you a better feel of the site.
It almost looks as if some of the trees and whatnot, Commissioner Gray, looked like about halfway, they seem to be centered in that strip, which is, as we know, is fifteen feet wide. Seven, I think it would probably be somewhere at seven, seven and a half, eight feet.
But then the plant has a little bit of width, so then... Some of these are evergreens and some of them are not.
One of the issues we did have is that we can't really plant a larger type of tree with a deep root, because we have a subsurface drainage system rippled over there. So that's why we went with the, you know, additional landscaping and the shrubs that way.
But there are poor good size, well, there's poor trees.
On each end of the subsurface drainage, we did have the trees, bigger trees there. We're trying to stay away from the edge of the pavement on Hot Meadow, just for sightline purposes.
Looking at the thundercloud, just to see how big that thing was going to get, to make sure it wasn't obstructing.
Right.
It's going to be beautiful, whoa.
Yeah. Nice colors.
And with the aerial I presented to you, you see the neighboring, the drive there, there's existing trees there too, so this would be in addition to that. So it would be pretty a setup entrance.
Certainly more robust than what was submitted with the initial application. Again, we, and it's in an effort not only to have the site plan approved, but also to be able to go to the fifteen feet.
Okay. You happy, Jackie?
I am.
Bruce, are you happy?
I'm, I think I fully understand this proposal.
Thank you.
That's a plus.
Mike?
If you don't understand it, then that's not a good sign we haven't done our job. I'm good.
You're good.
Thank you.
Danny, you happy?
I'm good.
No, I'm good. I appreciate having a photo here, because we also get to see the...
It helps a lot.
Planting on the adjoining property, yeah, because you've got the combination of the new property and the old property.
Are we ready to make a motion? Do we have any recommendation from the staff?
Yes, you have the attachment A.
Jackie has it, okay, Jackie.
Am I reading all of them?
You could just cite the staff report.
Excellent.
On attachment, for attachment A.
What's that? Attachment A.
Yep.
I would like to make a motion to approve application eighteen fifty of Christopher J. Smith, Esquire agent, for Thomas R. Evans, owner, for site plan amendment for a packaged store on the property located at one thirty-two Hot Meadow Street. The site plan amendment approval is based on the plans entitled Site Development Plan of one thirty-two Hot Meadow Street, Simsbury, Connecticut, prepared for Thomas R. Evans, two seventy-one West Pond Meadow Road, Westbrook, Connecticut, prepared by Anchor Engineering. Revision date, ten eighteen, two thousand and eighteen. The site plan amendment approval is subject to the attachment A, following conditions one through seven.
Here, second. Second by Kevin, further discussion?
Just a question, Dave.
Yep.
But just, an affirmative vote, as I've indicated by earlier vote, I'm not supportive of this use, but I am supportive of this building and the development of the property. If I, is there, am I confusing things by voting no on the motion?
We've already voted no on the liquor.
On the earlier motion.
But now you're voting yes on the building and the property.
But this motion is, is this raising again the issue of the use?
You can decide.
Robin says no.
Robin says no.
It could be something else in the future.
It could be something else.
Yeah, I'm fine with something else, probably, but it depends.
All right. Are we ready to vote? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? I hear no, oh, no, so it's unanimous. Okay. Application eighteen fifty-one of Michael Glidden for an amendment to the Simsbury Zoning Commission Regulations Text Amendment, Article seven, Section B, seven. We've had a lot of discussion, are we ready for a motion on this?
I am.
This is the one we had to change, though, isn't it? Yeah, we're getting rid of four words.
Okay.
Just like the previous text amendment, December fifteenth for effective date, if you're looking?
Was there a?
No, the applicant didn't want to prepare a staff report for his own application.
What a bum.
Can't be judge and jury.
Make it up. Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that we approve application eighteen fifty-one of Michael Glidden, Director of Planning and Community Development, applicant on behalf of the Simsbury Zoning Commission for a text amendment to Article seven, Section B dot seven, and Article seven, Section C dot nine of the Simsbury Zoning Regulations Regarding Accessory Dwelling Units with the one change to the printed amendment, that we delete in Section C one E the words "along a common wall."
Second.
Okay. Everybody agree with it? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Effective?
With the date.
Oh, effective December fifteenth.
December fifteenth, two thousand and eighteen.
Okay, who seconded it?
I did.
Jackie?
I reseconded it.
She reseconded it. Now we can revoke. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Six, nothing, carries. Thank you.
Reseconded?
All right. Application eighteen fifty-two of Robin Newton.
Reseconded, awesome.
We have a motion. Jackie?
I think Donna wants to do it.
Donna wants to do it?
Yeah, she was waiting.
Donna.
All right, I'll make a motion that we approve application number eighteen fifty-two of Robert Newton, Code Compliance Officer, applicant on behalf of the Simsbury Zoning Commission for a text amendment to Article ten, Section eight point six of the Simsbury Zoning Regulations Regarding Temporary Liquor Permits. Effective December fifteenth, two thousand and eighteen.
I'll second.
Bruce, go ahead.
Bruce, second. Okay.
It's such a good piece of work.
You're in favor of one-day permits, but none. Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Carries six, nothing. Thank you. Okay. Application eighteen fifty-eight of Mark Greenberg for the owner change. Are we ready to act on this, or?
I think so. I don't know if anybody has any other discussion.
Well, let me just offer something for thought, and then we can go ahead. But I'm not sure that everyone is familiar with this element of our zoning regulations, but in Article thirteen, Article thirteen, it's near the very end, there's a provision that says that in any petition for a change of zone, the zoning commission may require the submission of plans showing proposals for the development of the land involved in the zoning change. And then it goes on to say, "On the basis of such plans, the commission may grant the change in zone, subject to conditions which will protect the public interest and neighboring properties. And building permits will be issued only in conformity with the plans as approved and conditioned." And so I would offer, maybe just as an editorial, that the applicant's description of the imprecision and the lack of fullness of their thinking about what might be done there, if we felt concern about these residents and other issues, we could require that some degree of plans be presented to us before we consider the zoning change request. And then if we were to approve it, those plans would be the conditions for the issuance of building permits. So we would know what's going to get built there. And if it means they couldn't, we couldn't finalize this tonight, it means we couldn't finalize it till the plans show up. I'm not necessarily suggesting we do that. I mention it largely to make sure that other members of the commission are aware of that latitude and responsibility that we have to consider that action when we're asked to change a zone. And, I mean, we heard from one of the residents of the area, mostly about the implications along... West Mountain and Maureen Drive, but I think I've said enough. I just wanted to bring that to everyone's attention before we necessarily finalize, based on the absence of any substantial description of what might be done on that property, other than to say it would conform with our regulations. And that's about the commitment that we have. Something that conforms with our regulations would be proposed at some point in the future.
But the owner said that he can't do that without a zone change. That you can't go get financing and get people to do it if you don't have, so it's a chicken and egg thing. And I, you know, I think if the owner says that, I could respect it. I don't have any real reason to...
I think, you know, I understand that, and I don't dispute that viewpoint, Dave. But we do have a regulation here that is not widely known, and it's something that we might want to think more about as we go forward with review of our regulations too, so.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
Could we go to Mr. Glidden, just for maybe a more broader view, or is there anything else that you can tell us?
Yes.
About either that or this application?
Well, a lot of the concerns for potential impact, as we stated in the public hearing, if you were to, let me backtrack. If you were to approve this zone change to B three, as I stated earlier, the B three zoning district is considered a designed development district, so it has a higher degree of review and standards, basic performance standards, which are like normally accustomed to a special exception. And I think that if you were to just put a blanket, I'd like to see a, let's say, a hundred-foot buffer around the property as conservation easement or whatever. It may look fine on paper, but then, let's say, the density, the scope of that development, because once it goes to B three, that it's anything under the sun from a commercial perspective that's allowed in that zoning district, I think that those sort of measures to protect an adverse impact to the neighborhood would really need to tie down to a specific development. I think that you may be tying the hands of the property owner if you were to put some very strict, you know, conditions on the zone change. It's legislative action, though, by the zoning commission, so you really, you have a high degree of discretion on how you want to handle that change. So does that help you, Jackie?
I think so. I'm just trying to help with Bruce's concern as well. I feel good about the specifications of the B three, of what the applicant would have to do. I think it is very difficult for them to go to propose a site that is not zoned how they need it to be zoned, to get a client. That is, I think that is very hard. So for them to come to us right now, that is a catch. I don't know the best way to go about it, but I hear you.
Kevin?
Yeah, I mean, it's a May. I think, I agree with their conceptual ideas of what could happen, and I think it is a good piece of property that could be developed for business use, because we seem to be developing our other industrial properties, housing.
No apartments.
No, I agree.
Mike, Bruce has had his say.
I, uh, I can't imagine houses going on that property. As was stated in public comment, I don't think, if there was a house there personally, I would buy one if it was still on that property. But if there's a nice restaurant up there, I'd probably go to that. So, you know, most of the surrounding land is some form of commercial land or abutting. I'd be in favor of it.
Are we ready for a motion?
Sure.
Okay. Jackie?
Uh-oh.
I just asked that similar to your text amendment, set an effective date?
December fifteenth? You think? That's a good day?
I heard it's a good day.
Oh, it's a good day. All right. Good to know. Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
I'd like to make a motion. I'm not sure what.
Application eighteen fifty-eight.
Application, what is it?
Eighteen fifty-eight.
But is it just for zone change request? Is it just as simple as that?
No.
Okay. I'd like to make a motion to approve application eighteen fifty-eight of Mark Greenberg, agent Fiora, owner, for a zone change from R forty to B three on the property located on the northerly side of Albany Turnpike on the border of Simsbury and Canton, shown as Accessory's Map A twenty, Lot five oh three, Lot zero zero two dash A, Zone R forty, with the effective date of December fifteenth, two thousand and eighteen.
Second? Second by Kevin. More discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Passes six, nothing. Okay, then we got application eighteen fifty-nine. This is for a zone change on two forty-one to two forty-five Hot Meadow Street.
This is scheduled for a public hearing already? Yeah, there's no action requested by the commission?
Oh, I thought we didn't have, didn't have.
No, you don't have to, no actions requested.
No action required, no. I didn't read the left. Didn't read my instructions. Okay. And we have an application eighteen sixty-one to schedule a public hearing. No, we don't have to do that, it's already been scheduled.
So eighteen fifty-one, they filed their application, we were able to get the notifications in the Hartford Current, so they'll have a, it's a, this is a form view of the application. It'll be a public hearing at December third. It's advertised, and this is for filling and grading the floodplain at Dine on a Bell.
Which I think they told us about.
This is a different application. It came up kind of as a surprise to staff. This is, it has nothing to do with the remediation or the blast walls. They're redoing a loading dock.
Okay.
Thank you.
Okay, and we have application eighteen sixty-two that we should table?
Yeah, the applicant went before the design review board this evening, and design review had a slew of comments and concerns that they would like more information. They're tabling the application till December seventeenth, at their, the applicant could not make the December third meeting. So I'd ask that the commission do the same and table for December seventeenth. At your second regular scheduled meeting.
Motion to table application eighteen sixty-two till December seventeenth?
Seventeenth, sorry.
So moved.
Mike? Second. Second, Kevin, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, none, carries, six, nothing. Okay, the next one, the public hearing, is already scheduled for Henry James modifications.
So additions to the existing...
So additions to the existing middle school. And once again, just like the Dyno and Bell application, it was filed in time to get our advertisements in. So they'll be doing presentation to you in two weeks.
Okay. And now we have a couple of questions. One is on, Christiansen would like to talk about the ability to host weddings on Flammig Farm.
Pete Christiansen, 44 West Mountain Road. Nice to meet you guys. I've never done this before, so I am a little nervous. I'm not going to lie.
You're on TV, so don't worry about it.
Okay. Perfect. I'll keep a smile. But hello, town of Simsbury. My name is Pete Christiansen, and I am actually one of the fifth-generation farmers from over at Flammig Farm. I'm Evan and Julie's son. My parents send their best regards and truly thank you guys for letting me come and speak on their behalf today. Sadly, my dad is actually, well, it's actually a good thing, but he's in Arkansas with my mom getting some treatment for his high blood pressure. So a little bit about me, I'm 19 years old right now. I graduated Simsbury High, class of 2017. I was destined to go to UConn, study agriculture and environmental science, but that was until my dad's health issues arise. Kind of made me do a complete 180. Really got me thinking, like, holy cow, like, who is taking over this family business? I watched it grow my entire life, ever since I was a baby. My first word was tractor. But my parents have truly turned things into something, and that's when I ultimately came to my decision of I'm going to be the new face of Flammig Farm. And I pulled my deposit from UConn. I was weeks away from going there, but decided to pull. And now I work right alongside my parents, and I lend an extra set of hands wherever it's needed. Very nice. Dad's getting a little older now. They've worked all their life, so to be able to take some of the burdens off their back is extraordinary. But enough about me. I'm here because we are trying to host public weddings at Flammig Farm. What we're trying to do is, we are only going to host weddings part-time, so it'd be May to October, we're thinking of hosting weddings. We only are going to do one a week max, and we will never have more than 200 people. That's going to be our cap on that. We are providing nothing but the space and a tent is our plan. And we're actually going to show you a quick video to show you where the space is. It's my mom on her run. She's breathing a little hard, but...
Don't we all?
So I'm not sure if she's talking in it, but this is out in our field. So the wedding, you can, almost, the only visibility you might have of the tent is when you're passing the West Simsbury Fire Station. That's when you can maybe see the top of it. But other than that, that's going towards Flammig. If you turn to your right, you're heading towards Tall Meadow. The property lines back up right to each other, and we have gotten full approval from Tall Meadow to go right ahead with the weddings. And they are our only immediate neighbors, so that's looking out over Tall Meadow. But we've hosted private weddings in the past, and people, ever since I was young, I started to notice people talking about how beautiful and majestic the place was. So that's when I really decided it was time to make something happen. If Flammig Farm's going to grow, I have to add something to it. And this was going to be my little baby, because my family's always believed if business isn't growing, it's dying. And public weddings is exactly what Flammig Farm needs to grow. Thank you.
And what are the zoning requirements that we have to consider?
So, under your current regs...
Yeah, can I address one thing that I missed? I meant to say, it's written down on my paper, I just didn't look at it. But back in the day, Farmer Evan did sell the development rights to the farm, which means nothing can be developed out there, and that's why we're going tent and portable stuff. Nothing permanent will can ever be built out there, and we are not building anything permanent out there. So it's a short-term rental yearly, and that's our plan.
Under your current regs, this is a use that is not explicitly listed in residential zones. So he, the Flammig Farm is here before you tonight as a preliminary to get some feedback on potential text amendments. Whether it's, this is, this is an issue that we've come up in the past in other locations, too. And I know it's, it may be something of interest to the commission. They have kind of approached staff, saying that they need this to survive as a farm. However, the issue is, it's technically zoned residential, and it is some accessory uses that may be not to, plus customary incidental to the operation of the farm. We didn't feel it would be appropriate to treat that as accessory uses to farming operations. But really, staff's position would be is it requires a text amendment. I also asked them to come before the zoning commission, because if you recall, about a year and a half ago, you had two text amendments from Rosedale for a similar sort of use, maybe a little more intense than what they're looking for. So rather than waste their time, money, and effort of going through a text amendment application, I've asked them to come before the commission, so we can have that preliminary brief conversation now, than pursuing a formal application, and it could be just a repeat of past efforts. They have definitely, it is not similar to the Rosedale application, where I think we determined it was 100 events they can have for a calendar year. This is a very different, watered-down version of what was being requested. Are you still going with once a month?
We plan on one a week max.
But it's only, it's not for the whole year?
But it's only, yeah, it's only May to October is when we plan on having a tent up.
But Rosedale has houses right next to it.
Yeah, we have no visible houses on it.
They're on the street.
So here's the catch, because since it's obviously a text amendment, it opens the door to go to land in other places. And that was one of the issues that came up with the Rosedale application, was that this was, they were requesting a very intense event schedule, with like two different competing activities occurring at the same time on the property.
And that would open it up to any other similar properties?
Correct.
Yeah.
How big is the field that you're talking about?
So we own 44 acres. That field is 835 feet around without the woods line included. So not positive acreage, but I did measure it, because I plan on putting new fence up pretty wet, just in case.
Along the woods, too?
Yeah, so it's along the woods line. The woods line, there's no houses anywhere near that woods line. It backs out into the fields where we do our Halloween hayride, or the woods that we do our Halloween...
Does your acreage include the woods?
Yeah, yeah, we kind of, our, our line's kind of confusing. Tall Meadow just did a clear cut, so if you're ever walking, you can kind of do a zigzag line through the woods to see our properties. My dad's made a vow never to touch the trees again. He did 35 years ago. But everything's on our property. We're not on Tall Meadow's. Tall Meadow's property is literally that, if you're, when we were looking at that video, that dirt road that you saw on our right, if you're standing in that field, that is when you're on Tall Meadow's property. But we plan on containing all the people within that field.
How would you get in and out of it?
So the plan is, we're going to have a trolley. So I'm going to have to pay a trolley driver who will shuttle the people from the parking lot, which is the field in front of that field. So we're just, it's a short little drive, probably 10-second, 20-second drive, just to add effects. There will be a tractor drawn trolley who shuttles the people and brings them back to their car whenever so needed.
If you, behind you, I put up Google Earth to assist with maybe...
Perfect. So...
Just to clarify.
Just get an idea. Okay. So this is the field where we plan to put the tent up, right there. Tall Meadow's fields are the two brown fields above that, and this is the big hay field here. Halloween hayride goes all the way around there. So the closest residential houses are on Sugar Hollow Lane. We have good relationships with them. One of that's even my best friend, the Brightens. But they've never complained about Halloween hayrides. We've talked to them, and we've talked to Tall Meadow and have full approval. We have not gone over to St. Catherine Church or them, so maybe that's something we have to do. But parking lot is this field, the green field to the left of that one, and that's where the tent would be.
Wouldn't you be in competition with the church?
I guess so.
Walk right up the hill to it. Is that married in the church, walk right up the hill?
Yes. So I guess the question that staff has of the commission, is this something that you entertain if it was done in a manner that was scaled and controlled, so that it did not have an adverse impact to neighbors? It would require a text amendment, though?
If...
But maybe the text...
This is really, we're just, he's seeking, they're seeking guidance, and this is a non-binding opinion of the commission.
But if you had a tent in the field that you own...
Yep.
What do they need from us? You don't need permission to put up a tent.
You need permission to run a commercial operation, which is essentially what they're doing. It's a wedding venue. It's an event venue.
Go on the webpage. It'd be available to the public.
Actually, I attended a private wedding at site in 2017. One of the Vincent family members.
Awesome. Yeah.
It was really, it was a great setting.
Yep.
Somehow, if we can't make that work with our zoning regulations, we need some help here. I mean, really, that's, it's really, the surrounding area, you can't tell the size of the property. And you can't tell the difference between what you own and what color owns, and, you know, and all of that. So I would expect that we could...
We can't, unfortunately, this is not just for this site.
Right.
Unless, unless something in the text amendment defined how far away the houses were, or kind of narrowed the scope for other...
We have to avoid spot zoning, which...
Well, exactly. But, I mean, this is a different situation completely.
But we've been in the, I hear you. I don't know how we get around where we were last year with the same type of thing being proposed. If, if it's something we can do that's not spot zoning, that's great. But the universally broad what was in front of us before, there's a concern.
Well, I think, too, the, you know, I'm thinking about the Gifts of Love and their new name. I forgot what it is, but they want to make a wooden venue out of their barn.
Correct. They want to make that commercial.
And the structure's already there. Now, they're, I had the impression they're coming back.
Yeah. And, you know what, they're, they're a little different situation, because they're zoned industrial.
Yeah.
So them, believe it or not, Tall Meadow Farm is zoned B3. So they're like kind of the exception to the rest of the farms, where they have a, they can have a lot of other activities that occur there as of right by the zoning regulations. So obviously, Rosedale, Flammig Farm, Hall Farm, either one, they're subject to your residential zoning regs, which limit certain activities that are allowed. We looked at also, under temporary uses in Article 5, and whether this use could fit under that, you know, having a temporary use via zoning permit. The problem is, in your current regs, it really applies to public gathering events which are open to the public, such as a circus, a carnival. So having, renting out a space for a private wedding, it doesn't pass the straight face test as another, as a potential avenue for them to, under your current regs.
Right. I don't think, I don't think anybody's not in favor and love the site, but I think we're caught. So I don't know that we could give you an answer tonight until we do more research or see what we could do.
I think this feedback is valuable to, to...
Yeah, I'm learning it all, so this is good.
But obviously, it's being recorded, so his parents can see this where they are. And I think that maybe it warrants a follow-up meeting with staff.
Okay.
And we'll see if we can try to assist them with something that works, with knowing the commission's concerns. And this is why we wanted them here tonight.
And again, it's not this specific site. It's that...
It's the global impact that that change has.
Correct.
And what were the provisions that we did it under for Rosedale?
That's a good question.
I thought that was a...
Was that like a farm-to-table thing, or bakery?
Yeah.
No, but it was the tent for the weddings. We did?
I will tell you that I've researched both farms, because we've had questions asked of our office, and there are no approvals for Rosedale for the tents associated with the wedding.
Yeah. I don't think we ever did. That never came to us.
I haven't remembered.
What would happen if you put weddings in with carnivals? What were the, what would the repercussions be then? What are we opening up?
Well, so let me read you the exact language. "A circus, carnival, auction, festival of similar public gathering held for a period not more than 10 days, subject to the standards established by the above named agents for purpose of the section. Private tag sales in less than three days are exempt." So basically, what the section above in temporary uses, "Permits may be issued by the zoning enforcement officer following with conditions that will safeguard the character of the neighborhood. Prior to issuance of a permit, the zoning officer shall require written approval from the building inspector, chief of police, fire marshal, and director of health."
Each time?
Each time. But they apply for...
Well, and we wouldn't want a 10-day event. I mean, you know, so there's other things there.
No.
We'd have to filter it down.
Yeah. Wedding's a festival.
Not a 10-day. And it's not public.
I remember that.
I think that's the biggest thing. The way that it's written, those are public.
So that regulation, as it's used, is for our public gathering permits. So it's anything, it goes through our public gathering board, which is all of the names, including a few others, and then it goes in front of the board of selectmen for final approval, because it's a public gathering.
So that would be for every time? So that would not be a good option?
No.
That's not a good option.
Especially 24 times a year.
Yeah, that's not, that's not right. Okay.
I don't know. I think you should meet with staff and talk about it.
Yeah, definitely.
We don't have the answer here.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good luck.
Okay. We have a distillery to worry about.
Hello. Frank Luca. My business is Powderman Spirit Company, LLC, 1 Millstone Lane. I have to move, basically. So we started looking at a couple of buildings downtown, and we realized that to move downtown, we're going to have to have a text amendment or something to do it down there. I've identified two places. One building, I think, is perfect. The problems I'm going to run into is I have to change all my permits and everything, which I can start doing right away. And I was just getting ready to actually start selling my first product, and then sell another one in a couple of months. Now I want to hold off to move the whole operation, because I don't want to set up all the bottling and packaging equipment and then have to move it. So I think the biggest issue is, the two buildings we identified, the one I really want, they're pretty close to each other, but really can't, I only want to rent the building, which I could do, start next week, until I even have like a cursory, maybe, or something else, so.
Or a text amendment?
A text amendment. Rich is helping me on this. He's my realtor for both parties, my landlord and myself, so...
What's the concern? I'm sorry, the use...
So I can explain. So Frank's in a dilemma. For the center zone, you, the zoning regulations call distilleries, breweries, and wineries as light manufacturing, which are not allowed in the center zone at all.
Got it.
He's looking at properties in the center, so really, one of the two options he had on this, on the table, one was to amend the regs to allow light industrial in certain you, in certain areas. The problem with, with that is that if you were to amend the regs to allow light industry, you open the door for other uses. What he's thinking about is amending the regs to either call out distilleries alone and put it into another category. Before he goes forward, he just wanted to get a read on possibly relocating to the center as, as distillery. I think he had two properties correctly looking at.
Yeah, one, the perfect property, is the old freight depot, right behind, what is that?
Bank of America.
Bank of America, right over there, the old freight. That's the building we want. It's a standalone building. It'll be easier to get licensed. It's really cool. It fits in with the history of explosives and the town and trains and all that kind of stuff, so. And it's, it's, it's small, but there's two floors, so I can bond, the way it's set up, I can bond half of the upstairs and bond the whole downstairs, and still have enough room for people to come in and do tastings, you know, that kind of thing. So that's the perfect building. The second building is the basement of the mansion that they're remodeling right now. The problem with the mansion is, by the time it's built out enough for me to apply, because you have to have a certain amount done when you apply, it's going to be like... because you have to have a certain amount done when you apply, it's gonna be like March, you know? I could start applying next week if I know that we can work something out over the next couple of months, you know? I'll put all the applications and start the move, like, I can always cancel, but I have to go to the feds, and I have to go, well, I have to work with the town the whole time, and then the state. The feds, I talked to them already today, and they're like, well, you're not even selling yet, as long as, you know, the state doesn't have a problem, you know, we'll give you a new manufacturing permit in like a month, you know, it just depends on the list of people in front of me, basically, because I've already been background checked and everything's good. Then it has to go to the state, and to go to the state, you know, that's, they're gonna want more, they always do. But, you know, I would need to like be ready to go by like the end of January. I don't even know if you guys meet in January, do you?
We do.
We have one meeting in January.
Yeah, I just...
So, and what Frank's, the issue too, is that he'd have to apply for a text amendment and a special exception for the liquor license, so he's got two public hearings potentially with the commission. So just like the last individuals before you, they really do not want to proceed with formal applications, they want at least, or if they do proceed with formal applications, inform you that these changes are coming, because he's on a short timetable and will be applying.
Also, it's my problem, but I'm gonna have to pay two rents if I do this.
Sure.
So I'd like to jump into the guy in one building this week and just give him the deposit, and I can start building it out while we're working on the rest of this. I could have everything set up, I was already gonna upsize my still and everything from my beginning one to get approved, so I'm just gonna get that all built out and I can set it all up in the new building, it'll be there in like a month, I can get the whole thing ready to go. And as soon as I get my federal permit, I can actually move and start making liquor, I just can't sell it or anything. So I could, I could be out of Mill Pond in like a month and a half, even if I have to wait another couple of months for all the stuff with you guys and the state, but I could still, if we could get all going, I could be up and running by February. So I'm only gonna open like two or three months later than I was originally planning anyways this winter.
I think a text amendment for distilleries, like you said, wineries, though, a couple of things seems like a good use in the center. I mean, that's where you would want, that's where your people are.
I can input something to make it easier just for distilleries. We cannot sell liquor to you when you come in, like a brewery or a winery. We can give you tastings.
Right.
But there's not, it's not a retail transaction place where you're gonna come in there and get, you know, drunk. You can come in and buy two bottles of whiskey every time you show up, and we can give you, I think it's up to two ounces now, it used to be up to an ounce of liquor. And you know, and that, if you're doing tastings, that's just a quarter ounce here and there. So it would be, I think it would be easier, easy to kind of just focus on the distillery and keep the wineries and breweries out of it because they're different businesses. We can't sell like by retail and that.
I'd rather actually see the brewery one added, because I think that is something that you would want in the town center.
Well, that's why I believe, I'm just saying, they're different.
And it's more broad for...
If you're gonna get a winery out there.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I'm saying for me, it's just simpler.
I know, but we need to look at the bigger...
We have to look at all the use.
Just more in thinking of the restaurants and things like that.
If we make a change, it should be...
The breweries and wineries, I would love to have a brewery next door and a winery next door. I mean, we would all work together and, you know, I would love that, they don't compete with me.
Right.
They're just kind of competing.
No, I agree with you.
So what, what staff would recommend?
Oh, sorry.
If it sounds like the commission, what we'll talk to Mr. Lucas, is that applying for a text amendment to move or relocate the term brewery, winery, and distillery, which are in Section D as light industrial, to put it under Section I of restaurant and bar.
Mm-hmm, I like that.
And that would expand that use. And just so, just to tell you the implication though, that means it would be allowed in the SC1, SC2 on both floors, and on the ground floor, SC3, versus not allowed, period, in the center of town.
What are the Hot Meadows, is the Hot Meadows Street zone? I forgot how that lays out.
Hot Meadows, SC1.
Andy's is one.
Empty.
SC1.
SC1 is two.
It's too big.
Kingsley empty.
But SC1 is when people traveling through this area...
By what you're talking about, changing, okay.
Is there anything in that, SC1, 2, or 3, that we should be concerned? Is that what? Okay.
No.
That is...
No, we're just, I just wanted to give you a clear picture as this application's developed.
I don't think you have to worry about like having too many of them either, it's gonna self-regulate, it's not gonna be something that you're gonna have.
Yeah.
Yeah, I think that's something you can, from staff?
Oh, okay, great. That's awesome. Thank you.
What else is really saying, I didn't want to tell you?
Do we even do that on ourselves? Propose a text amendment?
He's a distillery, you said whiskey?
Whiskey.
Propose a text amendment.
I could expedite the process because...
I'm gonna start with corn whiskey, which is the feedstock for the bourbon to make the bourbon.
No, I think it makes sense in the town center to have those as an economic generator.
So I'm coming out with a six-month bourbon first and a corn whiskey. So the corn whiskey, I just got the labels approved last week.
The one thing, I think about is that we don't wanna be golden Colorado where...
Two months later, we come out with a bourbon. I don't wanna release them too far apart.
Cool, so many conversations going here and there.
I don't, I don't think we are actually concerned for that, that level, or don't. A little bit smaller.
We have the Rocky Mountain spring water.
Okay, thank you. Can we, Kevin suggested that we...
Oh, that's why it's my spring, we're gonna use it now.
The zoning commission implement that change.
You could file a commission-sponsored text amendment, staff could be prepared to file on your behalf at the next meeting, December 3rd. And then possibly, if we get our, all our, well, commission-led text amendment, so referral process or timing changes, we could possibly get it through your first meeting in January the latest, maybe the 17th. We'd have to look at dates.
Okay, I think, I think that's a good thing for us to do.
Yeah.
Great, do you agree?
Yeah, great. Sounds like...
Are you okay with us putting it in as I suggested, under restaurants, bars, in? Okay.
Yeah.
Because that's what, I will prepare that application for your next meeting.
Having done both manufacturing, I used to work at Inns and Pickford for many years, and I've owned restaurants, it's more like cooking than manufacturing anyways, it really is.
Okay, now we have one more item of discussion.
Thank you.
Robin gave us a, some options, short-term rentals, and there's some concern, and so the three options that she gave us. Has everybody reviewed them?
No. I forgot.
Gave them today?
Today?
No, they were given to you in October.
Oh.
For you guys to read and then come back and discuss.
Yes, oh, I brought those.
Yep.
Or we could do them next time, I don't know.
Let's put them on the agenda for the next meeting. Let's put this topic on the agenda for the next meeting.
If we could, just because I didn't know we were going over that today.
Right.
What was the date in October?
October 15th, so...
And is that document in the...
It's in the drive, it's in the...
Dropbox? Yes, it is.
Okay.
Do you want us to provide you paper copies before you leave this evening?
I think they should. Do you guys have them in?
We have.
I think you guys should have them.
Save a tree.
Yeah, that's fine, we'll look at the dropbox.
Yeah, I think we should at least address that letter.
Well, that's something that, no, this one.
Katie Martin.
Okay. The situation that presented itself, I think Mike said, is kind of resolving itself in that the land trust has proposed to put a gate across their drive on 60 West Ledge, which is across the street from the person who's complaining.
Wait a minute, Dave, I don't know what you're talking about.
There's a, there was a complaint, a letter to me, which was sent to everybody, from Katie Martin.
It's in the correspondence folder of the dropbox.
Okay. And the problem was that there was drug use and so on on the property that's by the master school there on West Ledge, and the neighbor across the street complained and complained to Town Hall, and it went to ZBA, and eventually, the land trust agreed with the neighbor across the street that if they put a barrier across, that that would help control the drug and other stuff.
Isn't that the road that goes down to the pond that's in the back there? Parallel to the access road to the school?
Halfway up the hill on the right.
Oh, no, no, I'm talking about...
It's toward, it's toward the master school, but it's right off the road. There's a parking place for maybe three or four cars at most, and you could hike back in there.
So if they put a gate?
It's supposed to be closed, there's a sign there that says it's closed at dusk.
Yep.
But they don't seem to pay any attention to that. So the land trust agreed to put a sign or a gate across, and that said, Ken Penone, the guy across the street, was happy that they'd do that and he would withdraw his complaint.
Who's gonna close the gate?
Ken Penone. We asked about that, they told us.
The land trust will be responsible for the gate.
Because when I saw this, I was saying, I can't believe we're trying to regulate open space.
Right, and so...
So I wouldn't, I wouldn't be in favor of text amendments, because we got a lot of open space, and everybody that has open space in town shouldn't have to now come under regulation. Basically, we're regulating uses, not nonuses, and open spaces are nonuses.
Well, that's not true. So, so the technical part of this conversation, it is something you guys should look at, and I'm gonna tell you why, because from a technical reading of your regs, there are areas where we allow open space very implicitly, it's listed in the regulations and associated with it. It wasn't just what was going on over there, they started building a parking lot, which would fall under a site plan amendment, except for they can't come in for a site plan because the use technically isn't allowed in the residential zones. So if it's just gonna be open space and you do nothing on the site, people aren't, the public's not going to the site, there's no trails on the site, there's no parking, I agree, you don't need to do anything, it's just a vacant lot that you don't do anything on. This is being used as passive recreation, there's walking trails, people are parking there, people are going there. So that is something you do normally address through your zoning regulations, and it is normally listed as unapprovable use. It's usually in any zone, and it's usually very clear in the regs, and it's actually not in our regs.
And we have approved it at other sites, I thought we had approved parking.
Well, there are sections of the regs, so like if they wanted to come in now and formalize their parking area with you, they technically couldn't because the use isn't approvable in that zone, because it's a residential zone.
What is formalized? If they leave it, if they put mulch down, is that formalized?
It depends, it could be. I mean, they cleared and spread dirt and put up parking signs and made a parking lot.
But there's some amount of accessory use that's okay. I mean, you should be able to park a few cars on an open space spot.
Right, but signage is now making it not open space.
I think what you wanna do is, because when we read the regs, and Bob D came to the ZBA hearing and he agrees with the interpretation, it's not allowed. You wanna make it clear that we allow this use. We all want this use there, so it should be clear that it's an approved use in any zone. And then if someone wants to come in and do those site improvements, just like any other person who would do site improvements, they come in before the zoning commission and they do a site plan. I don't think it's the use that's gonna necessitate them coming to your board, you can do it as of right in any zone, it's going to be once they wanna start doing improvements to that site that would necessitate them coming to the board. And you can, that's a clear, you know, you clearly distinct, you know, that in the regs when it's written.
That would be another one I would think should come from us.
Absolutely.
Okay.
I would agree with that.
Or we can incorporate it in the reg rewrite that we're about 90% there.
Yeah. I don't think it's anything, I think we can do it in the overall reg update, it's not something that's pressing.
Urgent.
It was urgent only because it was going through ZBA, they're almost to an agreement, so I'm hoping that before my ZBA hearing continues next week, that all the parties will come together and agree to all those terms.
Good solution.
Yep.